Counsel Flynn.
Counsel Janey.
Present.
Counsel McCarthy.
Here.
Counsel O'Malley.
Present.
Counsel Presley.
Present.
Counsel Wu.
Present.
And Counsel Zakim.
Here.
Madam President, all presidents come forth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I am informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. At this time, I would like all my colleagues and all guests to please rise as our lovely clerk comes to provide an invocation. And at that time, I would ask that all guests and my colleagues remain standing as she leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Good afternoon. The ringing of a bell calls us to worship. The pounding of a drum calls us to war. The popping of a cork calls us to celebration. What is the sound that calls us here? To hear one another. Listen, listen carefully. It is here in the silence, listen deeply. The beating of our own hearts calls us, excuse me, to ourselves, calls us to be true selves, calls us to be our best selves, calls us to be what we might become. Listen, there is another sound. The breath of our neighbors calls us outside ourselves, calls us to be companions, calls us to be allies, calls us to be partners. Listen, we must heed the call of our own hearts where love and truth, caring and justice are born. Listen, we must heed the call of others to gather together for some great purpose where passion and fidelity, compassion and equity are nourished. The hammering silence calls us together that we may do the work we cannot do alone. Let us heed the calls that come in the silence that we may be well and do good in this world together. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to invite up Counsel Presley, who has a special presentation today for Sunny Walker's Tavern in Roxbury. In a couple of minutes, okay? You can relax for now. All right. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
And I also wanted to invite Counsel Janey to join me while we honor a living history in our midst. You know, I had some remarks that I was working on, but I actually think The Globe did a pretty good job of telling this story. And so I'm going to read an excerpt from that in case you missed it in The Globe several days ago. But today, we are honoring the institution that is Sunny Walker. I believe in every way it is emblematic of the policymaking and reforms that you've been partnering with me on to reform the state's liquor license laws. And I'm going to tell a little bit of the story, which I think is so important that behind our work, that we are listening to the stories, which should ultimately be driving our efforts. On April 1st, Sunny Walker's, affectionately known by many of us as The Black Cheers, a Roxbury institution that has been a haven for generations of Black Bostonians, will serve its last drink. For nearly four decades, the hole in the wall was helmed by Arthur "Sunny" Walker, one of the first Black tavern owners in Boston. News of its closing ricocheted throughout Roxbury, and send-off events have been planned throughout this week, which I'll be sharing with you and encourage you to support. "In a city with few minority-owned bars, Sunny Walker's," it was originally called CNS Tavern, "was known as The Black Cheers," said Jerry Walker, who grew up slinging drinks alongside his father. "It was a place where everyone did indeed know your name, or nickname for that matter, and your drink was always waiting at the bar. Swearing around women was discouraged, and Sunny always made sure everyone got home safe. Ground zero for the city's Juneteenth celebrations, it was where you could shoot a round of pool or grab a fruit punch and watch the game." Sunny retired five years ago, and now Jerry and his sister Andrea Walker are ready to move on. Andrea said the decision to close was bittersweet. "I wanted to do right by my dad, and I've done that," she said. But she and her brother faced a problem. They knew the bar's full liquor license could draw over $400,000 on the open market in Boston's competitive restaurant industry. But anyone able to pay that amount was unlikely to want to take over the lease for a 1,000-square-foot bar in Roxbury. So to get the full return on their investment, she risked gutting the very community that her family had served. Ultimately, she and Jerry sold the license to Del Frisco's, a national chain of steakhouses that plans to open a restaurant on Boylston Street in the Back Bay. The siblings will turn the building over to a budding restaurateur who does not initially need a full liquor license. Community activists say the Walker's situation is indicative of a larger problem in a broken licensing system. And beyond the end of the era, the bar's closure is also seen by many as a microcosm of the state of Black business ownership in Boston. As he tells it, Sunny's transition from barber to barman took all of five minutes. The year was 1969, and Sunny and his partner Charles Canada ran a barber shop in Grove Hall when one of their regular customers, the Irish owner of the M&amp;M Tavern, came in. The neighborhood was changing, and following recent riots, he was looking to sell. The partners mulled it over for just a few minutes before deciding to get in the game. You see, hairstyle trends played a factor in this decision. More Black men were growing out afros, meaning fewer haircuts. Booze, however, was a sure bet. "We were like, 'Here we go,'" said Walker, who still possesses a sharp wit and will celebrate his 93rd birthday at the end of this month. That decision led Walker and Canada to become the first Black tavern owners in Boston. In 1980, he and Canada bought a second bar on Warren Street, which they renamed the CNS Tavern, combining the initials of their first names. It was later renamed Sunny Walker's. By 1985, the duo had gone in with another Black businessman to purchase a city block in Grove Hall that was dubbed, quote-unquote, "The Wonder Block," a name that, depending on who you talked to, reflected either the heroic efforts to revitalize the neighborhood or questions about whether they could succeed. Well, there are no more questions, only longstanding evidence and proof of what is possible when someone has a dream, a love for community, and a community that supports them. Will you please join us at the dais so we can honor you? Now, while Mr. Walker makes his way up here, I do, just this morning, we were on a camp, just this morning, the women counselors participated in a panel, and we were each asked to highlight a gem within our district. Counsel Janey proudly represents the 7th District and was speaking about the many gems in her district. And I know she certainly considers Sunny Walker's to be one of them, so I want to invite her to say a few words.
So again, many thanks and congratulations. I know this is very bittersweet, and I just want to say to you, Mr. Walker, thank you for your vision, thank you for your commitment to community, thank you for your entrepreneurial spirit, first with the barber shop and then with the tavern. It's really important to celebrate those first, and hopefully, it will not be the last that this has paved the way. I know that your children have done a fantastic job. Every time I've visited your establishment, I've always had a great time. You know, my cousin is always there, Paul Rogers is always there, and it is truly a place where you feel at home. So thank you for creating that special sense of community right within our community. And again, it is such a gem, and would love to just wish you a happy birthday as well. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank everybody for this showing up and honoring me. I, first time in my life, I've been in this City Hall. And I'm 92 years old now, but it's a great honor to be here and let me speak in City Hall. And I didn't know all this was going to be happening today, but other than that, I want to thank everybody for giving me this honor to be here. Thank you.
So will everyone join us in the middle for a photo? And I see we're also, Ms. Harris, will you join us as well? Will you join us here for the photo as well? Well, folks, head back, and please, take your time. I'm going to ask the students from Ulster University to come down, and James, if you want to join them. So this is the next presentation, and I have the honor of welcoming all of these incredible students from Ireland who are here from, am I saying Mr. Ulster? Okay, Ulster University in Northern Ireland. And they're here for a nine-day cultural immersion program. And so anytime we have young people in the chamber or students in the chamber, particularly from other countries, we want to acknowledge their presence and welcome them formally. But I also want to give an opportunity for one of the students to talk about what they're doing in the city of Boston. But can we give them a round of applause for coming here today? So please come up and offer a few words.
It's lovely to be here, and it's very, very welcoming country. Basically, what we're doing is we're meeting employers from different disciplines. So we have engineering, we have marketing, computer science, and there's a few things as well. And we've also been going to colleges such as Boston College and seeing how education over here is quite different. Back at home, we wouldn't be as big into the sports as yous would be. So it's quite, it's quite different seeing that over here. We've also been doing a few fun leisure activities, such as Duck Boat Tower and everything. And it's basically just to see how different life is over here compared to back home. And possibly, whenever we go on a placement year, just to see if we'd want to come over to America and see how different it would be. So it's lovely to be here, and thank you for having us.
Tammy puts me to shame. I won't do as good a job as you. So my name is Anne-Marie Byrne, and I work at the Irish International Immigrant Center, or the Irish Immigration Center, as I still call it sometimes. We actually partnered with Ulster University for this project. So I just want to say thank you for welcoming us into your home and your workplace. And we've really had a great time. Thank you to James and all the staff here. And also, I just want to recognize what a wonderful group. They arrived last Thursday, they go back on Friday. We have kept them. Go, 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 go. So a mix of anything you can think of, we've done pretty much, and we're still doing. So I just want to acknowledge how proud I am of the group, how great they're doing, and how we value the partnership with the city of Boston and also Ulster University. Thank you.
If I can invite my colleagues to come up and take a group photo. And then also, I also want to thank James for spearheading this on behalf of the city of Boston. So thank you, James. So everyone come up, we'll take a quick picture before they go off to their next adventure. Count me in. We worked in partnership with them. Oh, thank you, James. Moving on to the regular business of the day, we'll move into the approval of the minutes. If there are no objections, no corrections, I should say, to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objections, the minutes of the last meeting stand approved. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 0479, message and order authorized in the city of Boston to accept an expenditure grant of $55,976.70 for the FFY 2018 Traffic Enforcement Program, awarded by the United States Department of Transportation, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund high-visibility traffic enforcement of motor vehicle laws, including, but not limited to, speeding and aggressive driving, impaired driving, and occupant protection.
Counsel McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. At this time, I rise to ask for suspension in passage of 0479. I think we all agree that some of our highest-volume calls regarding vehicle speeding and aggressive driving, so the quicker we get this to the Boston Police Department, the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel McCarthy, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, moves for suspension of the rules in passage of docket number 0479. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0479 has been passed. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket number 0480, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of March 14, 2018.
Docket 0480 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action?
Docket number 0291, order for hearing to discuss flooding in the city of Boston.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Wu, the Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick report on what happened, and I'll request that this stay in committee for further sessions. But I want to thank many, many of our colleagues who were there. We had a discussion with Allison Brizzius, Director of Climate and Environmental Planning for the Environment Department, and Rich McGinnis, Deputy Director for Waterfront Planning, as well as Chris Bush, Senior Waterfront Planner from the BPDA. Panelists included the Center for Urban Watershed Resilience, the Center for Sustainable Enterprise and Regional Competitiveness at UMass Boston, the Boston Society of Architects, and Society of Civil Engineers, as well as our great advocates from the Conservation Law Foundation, Harbor Keepers, Green Ribbon Commission, Boston Harbor Now, and others. So, long story short, there's a whole bunch of issues that Boston has to focus on for the short term and the long term. We know that our position as a coastal city makes us very vulnerable to climate change, and that this combination of sea levels going up with more intense storms with our rivers and our older water infrastructure means that more and more homes, businesses, residents are experiencing flooding every time there's a big storm. You know, many of our districts are directly affected, and the entire city really will be affected before too long. So I think the immediate next steps are to talk, keep going on the conversation about financing. There will be a launch of a special financing report on April 13, I believe, at UMass Boston. And in this committee, I would like us to take two separate tracks. One focusing on emergency preparedness and response. I know Counsel Flynn and others were particularly concerned about how are our emergency vehicles going to get there if the streets and roads are all flooded? What is it, what are the evacuation plans if people's buildings are, you know, underwater? And then a separate track on water and sewer and our stormwater infrastructure and wastewater infrastructure. Much of the flooding reported, particularly in the seaport, actually was coming from, coming up from the drains rather than sort of water spilling over. So there's some infrastructure questions that we have to dig into more detail on, too. There'll be more of these sessions, and really thank everyone for your participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
Hi, just wanted to rise and again thank Counsel Wu and her leadership. I thought the hearing was by far one of the best I've attended in the three months I've been here on the, on the city council. So, and I also really enjoyed the fact that there was such robust discussion about how the community not only is going to be impacted, but how they can drive the actual resiliency design and making sure that they have a seat at the table. You had mentioned two tracks, and I would encourage a third as well when it comes to the discussion that we need to have, which is about the resiliency planning, and Climate 2030 especially, and how in one vein, the city is discussing how we need to get prepared. And on the other, as I brought it up during the hearing, how we seem to be still building infrastructure for fossil fuels at the same time. And so really making sure that the city is speaking in one voice about being prepared and being a green city, and also making sure we get to that net-zero goal as well. So just again, adding to the buckets, we just want to make sure the city is also being accountable and by its own planning, headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Docket 0291 will remain in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Docket number 0166, ordinance increasing access to voter registration.
Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We held a hearing on Monday, March 26, Committee on Government Operations, and the purpose of the ordinance was to make voter registration more accessible for anyone who has the right to vote by drawing on partnerships with BPS, BTD, BPL, and the election departments. At the hearing, we heard from administration officials who highlighted the work that they're doing in this space, as well as their willingness to implement some additional protocols that are proposed by this ordinance. We also heard from Voting Rights activists who also spoke in favor of the ordinance and the importance of removing barriers to voting in general. The committee had a very productive session and looking for a little more time to incorporate some of those suggestions in. Some of the minor tweaks, our colleagues, City Council Kim Janey, had highlighted maybe injecting some help from community centers. And our colleague, City Council Red Flynn, talked about veterans, particularly veterans overseas, and their rights to gain access to ballots and to, and have those ballots count. So he often referenced when he was serving our country in the Navy overseas, it would be, he'd get the ballot months after the election and after the votes were tallied. So by adopting those two suggestions through the chair, we're going to ask that it stay in committee and at this time defer it to the lead sponsor, Counsel George Zakim, who's done some great work on this issue. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Zakim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Chairman Flaherty and many of our colleagues who attended this hearing, and in particular Counsel Janey, who suggested, including our BCYF Centers, as a place where voter registration materials can be provided. Counsel Flaherty gave an accurate summary of where we are, I think, with some minor tweaks to clarify a few provisions and to add BCYF Centers to this legislation. I think we'll be ready to go forward probably in a new draft fairly soon. And I also just want to thank Mayor Walsh and his administration for coming here and all being supportive and talking about ways that they were ready to enact this legislation once this body passes it. So I look forward to continuing the work and getting this on the books in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zakim. Docket 0166 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket number 0444, message and order approving a $9,486,511 for the purpose of paying the costs associated with boiler and roof repairs at the following schools: East Boston High School, Sumner School K-5, O'Donnell School K-5, Russell Schools K-5, and Tobin School K-8. This includes the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and for which the city of Boston may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, known as the MSBA. Said amount to be expended under the direction of the Public Facilities Department on behalf of Boston Public Schools.
Counsel Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee held its hearing yesterday. We had testimony from Brian McLaughlin, the Chief of Staff from the Public Facilities Department, as well as John Hanlon, the Director of Operations from BPS. These projects are part of the MSBA These projects are part of the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program. Many of you that have been here for a while know that we've been participating in this program for many years, and we get reimbursed at a rate of 65.5, a little under 65.5% from the state for all of these projects. And the clerk read out East Boston, O'Donnell, the Russell is a roof, the rest are boilers, Sumner and Tobin. These repairs, you know, materially extend the useful life of our schools and preserve our assets, so I recommend passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Counsel Siomo, the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, recommends passage of docket 0444. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes.
Yes.
Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley.
Yes.
Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zachem. Counsel Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 0444 has received unanimous votes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0444 has been passed. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0481, Counsel Asabi George offered the following resolution in support of Mass House Bill 615, an act regarding Medicare savings programs eligibility.
Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I first want to recognize that we have in the chamber with us members of the Mass Senior Action Council, here in blue. We've, we've met a number of times over the last few months, or the last month and a half or so, and they've been, they've strong-armed me into presenting this resolution before you. It was a very easy, very easy fight. So, I am here before you today to lend my support and asking you for your support on Mass House Bill 615, which is an act regarding the Medicare savings program and its eligibility. If passed, this will increase the income federal poverty line to allow more seniors to access Medicare assistance. It is ridiculous that Massachusetts offers assistance with health care costs to individual, individuals who are between the ages of 19 to 64 with incomes up to 300% of the poverty line, yet our seniors ages 65 and up must have an income below 135% of the federal poverty line to access similar assistance. This bill will increase the income eligibility for the Medicare savings program in Massachusetts from 135% federal poverty line to 300% federal poverty line, which will, which will allow more of our seniors to have access to better quality health care. I ask that all of you consider joining me today in supporting this resolution and this work that's happening at the State House. But more important than that, I would appreciate your support of these seniors who are advocating not just for others, but advocating for themselves in a, in a really critical way, becoming more civically engaged, becoming a part of this process and learning how, and advocating for each other in this work. And we know how important that is to advocate for each other. So, they've really taken the lead in doing this work every single day on behalf of themselves and their peers and their communities at large, and taking this fight and this work from City Hall to the State House and at the federal level. So, I want to, I hope to have your support in this today, but really want to recognize their work and their advocacy in this space for, for all the seniors of Boston and of Massachusetts. So, I appreciate, I appreciate all of you, but I appreciate you for this work and for being here and really leading the way for all of us, leading us the right way in this way. So, thank you, Madam President, and thank you all.
Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Counsel Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just rise to commend the Maker and ask to have my name added. And as I've often said, what I love about activism and civic engagement is that there is neither an eligibility age or a shelf life, and Mass Senior Action certainly proves that every day. So, we thank you for your mobilizing, for your advocacy, for your educating us about your, about your issues. And, and this is incredibly important in that the baby boomer generation is aging. We want to make sure that in, thanks to science, you know, we are all living longer lives. We want to make sure that you are aging in community, and one of the ways that we ensure that that happens is that you are in good health, so that you can age in dignity and gracefully and remain connected to community and continue to be civically engaged. So, making sure that you have access to affordable, quality health care is critical to your staying engaged, and we certainly do need you. So, we thank you for your advocacy, and again, I thank Counsel Asabi George for her leadership, and we should have my name added, and look forward to voting in the affirmative.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Presley's name, Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Janey, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, and the Chair. And Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
That's right. Just want to add my name.
Okay. If you could also add Counsel Flaherty's name. At this time, Counsel Asabi, or George moves for suspension, seeks suspension of the rules and adoption, and adoption of docket number 0481. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0481 has been adopted. I also want to thank Mass Senior Action for being here, for their advocacy, and one of my dear residents, Ms. Edna Prouse, has taken on the leadership role at Mass Senior Action, so thank you all for all that you do. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could read docket 0482.
Docket number 0482, Counsel Flynn offered the following order for hearing regarding the issues related to stray voltage in the City of Boston.
Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Some of my colleagues and members of the public here today may have seen recent reports regarding stray voltage, shocking dogs in the City of Boston. Earlier this year, a tragic incident occurred when a dog was electrocuted on South Hampton Street due to stray voltage underneath the ground and passed away as a result. I have since met with the dog owner and talked about this issue. At that time, it has come to my attention, there were several incidents similar in nature to this tragic event that occurred over a decade ago in Boston, such as two electrocuted dogs in Chinatown in 2005, and a dog in Charleston in 2006. More recently, other dogs have been shocked by voltage in the city. There were two dogs shocked this past Christmas at a manhole near the Adams Street Bridge. Fortunately, they survived. Just this past Friday, a friend of mine was walking out on Castle Island in South Boston when his dog was shocked at a puddle near a light pole by the water. I was with Representative Nick Collins at the time. We arrived on the scene shortly thereafter. We also talked to the owner about this traumatic event. In addition, we spoke with the State Department of Conservation and Recreation about the incident and steps that they were taking to address public safety. Being out there that day, I couldn't help but think of the recent flooding that has also taken place in January, in March of this year, that Counsel Wu also mentioned and talked about. I remember seeing the videos of the Sugar Bowl out there and being flooded and underwater, like I have never seen that before. It made me wonder whether there should be any system or protocols in place to check on our infrastructure in the vicinity of this flooding following these storms. From my preliminary discussions with officials from the Department of Public Works, it is my understanding that the City of Boston contains older electrical cabinets, and during the winter months, the ground in the proximity, proximity of this infrastructure can become saturated and mixed with salt used to help clear the city's roads and sidewalks. When that happens, this combination of saturated ground and salt can corrode wiring and grounding lugs to present conditions where tragic events like this can occur. It is my hope that this hearing will allow us to speak more in depth with the relevant City of Boston departments, including Public Works, Transportation, perhaps our partners and state government, and at DCR, the utility companies about the causes of these incidents and infrastructure involved, and whether a study of older infrastructure in the city is feasible, maybe even including a PSA announcement as well. We may also want to brainstorm about what short-term and long-term steps that may be taken to help reduce the likelihood of events like this from occurring in the future. In the final analysis, I am calling for hearing on this matter, as dogs and pets are members of our family, too. Speaking with those that lost their beloved pets or nearly lost them, I just can't imagine what they're going through. My kids, my wife, and I would be devastated if that happened to us, as we all would. It has reinforced my belief that we must bring the experts and stakeholders to the table and discuss this, discuss this issue related to stray voltage in the city more in depth. I'd like to ask for your support and hope you all can work together. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Counsel Flynn. Madam Clerk, if you could add the names of Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Janey, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Presley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. Counsel O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the Maker, our good friend and colleague from District Two, ask that my name be added. This is a very important issue, and I think it's not dissimilar from work that this body's done on gas leaks and some other ways, that, you know, we encourage a foster, a better fostered relationship with many of the utility companies because it's really incumbent upon them to make sure that the, the infrastructure is safe. This can be avoided. It will cost something, but the proper insulation, we can avoid it, and unfortunately, this has become not a frequent occurrence, but not a, but an occurrence that occurs several months, or every, once every several months, or every several years, and it can be devastating. So, commend the Maker for this. It's a very important issue. Look forward to the hearing and look forward to making sure that the utility companies involved really live up to their end of the bargain to make the streets safer for all Bostonians, even the four-legged ones, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel O'Malley's name, and I quickly have to thank Counsel Flynn for bringing this forward. My dog actually goes to the same place that that woman's dog went to when he was struck by a vault of electricity and died, so thank you for your work on this. Docket 0482 will be assigned to the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans and Military Affairs.
Docket number 0483, Counselors Edwards and Siomo offer the following order for hearing regarding the City of Boston's review of proposed development containing corporate short-stay, executive suite, and short-term rentals.
Counsel Siomo, you have the floor.
I'm going to thank you first for your leadership and partnership in this. You know, we're experiencing the most robust growth in the history of our city, and a lot of it is in my district. And as we grapple with the new regulations around home share and short-term rental platforms, I want to ensure that we're on the same page with the BPDA, with developers, that they're not setting aside units or, you know, anticipating or ensuring their investors that, you know, that they're going to include short-term rentals before we actually come up with some regulations around that. And we, you know, as we continue to craft these policies, it is, it is important to understand how the BPDA will judge development projects that may attempt to set aside these units to be used on the short-term rental market. Those units are set aside to be used for short-term rentals, and are they counted against the 53,000 units that, you know, 2030 is, is setting as a goal? So, I have many questions for the BPDA development team, and again, thank you for your partnership on this, Counsel Edwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. Counsel Edwards, you have the floor.
I want to thank you also, Counsel Siomo, for your reaching out and I think really demonstrating that in the back and forth on the short-term rentals or any issue, it's really the ability to find common ground and common questions, to be able to drive for, drive for policies that we can certainly both agree on. And I think that, I think this was a wonderful opportunity, and I really enjoyed working with you on this. I think, and not to echo everything that Counsel Siomo has just said, but there are other perspectives as well that I'm particularly curious about with the BPDA's role in not only permitting large projects and allowing short-term rentals in them if they are, but when they find out that short-term rentals are now occupying the units that they thought were going to be occupied by residents, what if anything, or any power does the BPDA have to hold those developers accountable? If not for that project, then projects that come down the line. We want to make sure that when we are getting to these aggressive goals of 53,000 units, that they are actually used for their intended goals, which is to, which is to house Bostonians. We do not necessarily want to make sure that folks are making even more money on our waterfronts to the exclusion of a lot of our residents. I specifically also want to make sure that if they are making that additional funding, then why aren't we reexamining their, their contributions to affordable housing? To linkage, for example, if they are now using this as a commercial space instead of residential, shouldn't we reconsider reexamining some of that funding and getting that back to help them pay for affordable units elsewhere? Should we also be looking at the percentage of affordable units they're required to have in the building if they're going to have short-term rentals there? Shouldn't we increase from 13% to maybe 20%? And these are just questions that we have, and I really appreciate it, again, being able to work with you about having, yes, still questions on the short-term rental issue and investors versus not having investors at the grand scheme, but also when it came down to the planning component, being able to partner with you to host this hearing and to have this robust discussion. So, I'm really excited about continuing the, the ongoing conversation, but also being able to narrow in on this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Counsel Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to ask that my name be added and applaud the co-sponsors. It's just last year, I think I filed a essentially identical hearing order when I chaired the Housing Committee, which Counsel Edwards is now souably chairing. I think it's an important part of our planning process, even separate from the discussions we've had over the past month over short-term rental regulation in general in the City of Boston. But the fact that we ask our neighbors, our civic associations, and obviously all of us to participate in, whether it's an IAG or whatever acronym is appropriate for the community review process for these projects, we need to know what we're talking about. We need to know if we're talking about, just as we want to talk about whether it's a rental or whether it's a condo, just as we want to talk about whether it's family-sized units, three bedrooms, or two bedrooms, or studios. Well, just like we want to talk about what the mix of affordable versus market rate is, the existence of short-term rentals in this, in the plan of a developer needs to be discussed, needs to be part of that review process, and I think needs to be an important consideration, whether the BRA chooses to approve or disapprove such a project, and I think we owe it to our residents and our communities to do that. So, again, please add my name. I look forward to the hearing, and I applaud the two, the two offices of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Zachem. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Zachem's name, Counsel Asabi George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Janey, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Presley, Counsel Wu, as well as the Chair. Docket 0, docket 0483 will be placed in the Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Docket number 0484, Counsel Wu offered the following resolution urging increased funding for youth works, youth jobs on state budget line, item 7002-0012.
Counsel Wu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. We all have to do our part to make sure that the city, the state, and all of our, our partners are investing in youth. It's truly the best investment that we could be making as, as a city, is to open up the opportunities for our young people to take their place as leaders and to get the skills that they need from summer jobs, from year-round jobs, to, to participate. In Boston, the Mayor at every event in the business community is always asking for more folks to step up and participate, and the city is working to expand our program, our summer program, but we need the state to step up, and we need those funds that this line item provides. In FY15, Youth Works was funded at $9.8 million with the minimum wage of $8 an hour. Since then, the minimum wage has gone up, and so, we need the funding, we need that line item to reflect the same number of jobs and to continue to increase on a regular basis. Level funding this is simply not sufficient for the, to meet the demand that's out there. Young people who are smart, ready to get involved, but just need that door open and that first job to, to pick up some skills, prove themselves, and move on to opportunity after all. prove themselves, and move on to opportunity after opportunity. I want to give a special shout-out to James Mackey, who's here with us, lead organizer for the I Have a Future Coalition. He and his partners put together an incredible rally last month, and the I Have a Future Rally really brought together youth from across the state to stand up and say, "This is our future we're talking about, and these are the leaders of today." So, I want to ask the Boston City Council, you know, we are always in support of expanding opportunities for our youth and our young people, but let's formally put our voice to urging the state to step up on this line item, and then we'll match with our advocacy at the city level when our budget season hits as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor Presley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the maker and the advocates as well, and wish to have my name added. And, you know, certainly, on the heels of the March for Our Lives rallies throughout the country, certainly here in Boston as well, while we are all celebrating youth activism and youth voice, that we should also be affirming and investing in youth development. But this is not only about professional and workforce development. We know that 50% of people in the City of Boston, their annual income is less than $37,000 a year. So, this is not simply about workforce development and the future of our economy, although that is important. It is also about the sustainability of families that are struggling, youth that are responsible for contributing to their household income. Also, looking at Mass Senior Action, the growing number of grandparents that are raising grandchildren on fixed incomes. You know, those grandchildren need to be contributing to those households. I wish this were a different world, and our youth could just focus on their education and nothing else, but that's not the reality of the world that we live in. Not only do they need this income, we also do need to invest in their professional and workforce development because that has everything to do with our future. We do all have a role to play in this and a stake, and we need to hold one another collectively accountable. So, I thank Counselor Wu for putting this forward. Thank you, Mr. Mackey, and all of the youth who you uplift every day to make sure that we don't forget their stories and their struggle. And again, I wish to have my name added.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counselor Presley's name. Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Edwards, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Janey, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Zakim, as well as the Chair. Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Madam President, I'd like to have my name added. This is something near and dear to my heart, so I want to thank Counselor Wu. I've been fighting for summer jobs programming and funding summer jobs money since 1996. Ninety-six. So, that then Counsel Afeni used to call me all the time, looking for additional summer jobs. But, you know, back then, we had the Boston Miracle, but it really wasn't a miracle. You know, President Clinton unleashed unprecedented amount of funds from the feds and through the private industry council, ABCD, the Boston Youth Fund, and Justice for Jobs. We were hiring over 11,000, 12,000 kids a summer. 11,000 kids in the summer. The reason why we had the Boston Miracle wasn't a miracle. It was because we all worked together to make sure the kids had meaningful jobs. The soft skills that they were giving, showing up on time, dressing appropriately, leaving on time, signing in, signing out, all the things that we take for granted is so important. And that generation, you know, four years ago when I was knocking doors for the first time, I can't tell you how many people said, "Oh, I was at Healy Field, and you fired me" because I wasn't, I didn't show up. And I always said, "Oh, was it, you know, did you deserve it?" And most of the time, they said, "Yeah, I did, I deserved it." But now, they know better. And it was a great experience that I had. And a lot of the kids in the City of Boston, I think a lot of people will tell you that most people from the age of probably 35 to 45 were red shirts at some point in time. And I'd love to see it come back. And Counselor O'Malley and I had kicked it around a little bit. I'd love to kick it around again with you this year, Matt, because I know so many people who are red shirts. I told Eddie, Counsel Flynn, that I was cleaning out my dad's basement. We were doing some work, and I found my supervisor red shirt from 1988, '89 that said, "Raymond L. Flynn, Mayor, Boston Youth Cleanup Corps." So, you know, those are the times when a lot of kids were working. And I think that generation is better off because of that program, and I'd love to see this, and obviously, I'm enthusiastic about summer jobs. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. And I have to add, this body worked really hard in the last budget cycle to establish a fund specifically dedicated, resources in the budget to actually fund youth development programs. So, the city is definitely stepping up. We need our state partners to do the same. And we'll never, ever, in our city budget, be able to create all the resources or set aside all the resources we need. We truly need the state to be partners in this. So, Counselor Wu, thank you for your leadership. And James, thank you for your advocacy and for mobilizing the young people. At this time, Counselor Wu moves for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0484. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0484 has been adopted. At this time, I'm going to call on Counselor McCarthy. What purpose do you rise?
I rise to speak on behalf of Alex Juntis, Assistant City Clerk.
Go right ahead.
I just rise to speak in favor of my friend, my colleague, my now constituent, which is still weird to me. Alex Juntis to be re-approved as the Assistant City Clerk. I think we all work incredibly well with Alex, respectful and diligent. He's perfect for that position, and I think Maureen would love to have him back.
Yes.
So, I'm speaking in favor, and I'd love everybody to jump on board.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy, and thank you, Counselor Flaherty, for the second. At this time, we will call, do a roll call vote for approval of the Assistant Clerk for a term of three years. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Janey.
Yes.
Counselor Janey, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Counselor Presley, yes, of course. Counselor Wu. Counselor Wu, yes, and Counselor Zakim.
Yes.
Counselor Zakim. Madam President, the Assistant Clerk has received a unanimous vote for reelection.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and congratulations to Alex. We look forward to continuing to work in partnership with you, and thank you for sometimes being our clergy and a jack-of-all-trades. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Alex will serve for three more years as the Assistant Clerk. At this time, I am informed by the clerk that I have two late-file matters, which in the absence of objection, will be added to the agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections, the two late-file matters are added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, if you could read the first late-file matter.
In the City Council, March 28, 2018, Counsel Campbell for Counselor Edwards ordered that...
Counselor Edwards moves for suspension of the rules and passage of the first late-file matter, which is a personnel matter. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the first late-file matter has been passed.
In the City Council, offered by Counselor Josh Zakim, resolution opposing questions regarding citizenship status for the 2020 census. Whereas Article 1, Section 2 of the United States Constitution mandates a decennial census in order to count all persons within several states, the census is the authoritative count of residents used by the federal government as well as state and local jurisdictions. Whereas this decision by the Trump administration is only the latest attempt to intimidate and exclude immigrants from participating in our democracy and will severely impact the representation of our communities have in government at all levels. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Boston City Council in meeting assembled does call on the United States Congress and our Massachusetts Federal delegation to reject this proposed change and to oppose any further attempt by President Trump and his administration to marginalize immigrants and exclude them from being fully counted in the 2020 census.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Zakim, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Let me first apologize for the late file. This news only broke yesterday after our filing deadline, but I think it's important that this body take action swiftly, so I will be asking for suspension and adoption. But just briefly, as Chair of our Civil Rights Committee, I think it's important, as we've said over and over again, as this body has acted unanimously over and over again, to protect and defend the rights of everyone in the City of Boston, regardless of immigration status, regardless of background, where they're from, residents and visitors alike. And this is important on that level, on the civil rights level, but it is also important on our level as representatives of the local government because the census numbers dictate for the next decade the allocation of federal resources, whether we're talking about financial assistance or we're talking about congressional representation, as well as in our state legislature and as well as our city council districts. This is incredibly important, and the fact that this President Trump and his administration are planning to insert a question for the first time in over 60 years that will inquire about the citizenship status of people receiving the U.S. Census is clearly intended as numerous experts and commentators and constitutional law experts and professors, and as our Attorney General, Maury Healey, has already filed suit to stop this move, along with 11 other state attorneys general. It's important that we stand up. You know, I'm quite confident that our elected officials, our U.S. congressmen and congresswomen from Massachusetts and our senators are on top of this, but it's important that we add our voice, and it's important that we're standing up for our people here as we are entering the budget process, and Counselor Siomo will be shepherding us through that. The amount of money that this city relies on based on these census numbers are really important, and the Constitution does not make any qualification over which people are supposed to be counted. It is that all the people in the United States are to be counted in this census. And it's quite clear, both from the history of this president and his administration and from the expected impacts, that this question is being added solely to discourage participation of immigrant populations, citizens and non-citizens alike. This will disproportionately affect cities like Boston and communities that have large concentrations of immigrant populations, and I think that's the clear intent. And I, again, thank my colleagues for their indulgence in the late file. I do think this is important to be acted on today, and I will move for a suspension and adoption. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Zakim. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? At this time, Madam, oh, I apologize. Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
I just wanted to echo my colleague's comments. Having worked in the immigrant community for years and organizing them, many of our biggest, one of our biggest challenges is actually getting them to trust the government and being able to come forward and say, "I am here, and this is what I'm doing to contribute to this community regardless of my immigration status." And we had a horrible, horribly difficult time trying to get immigrants to fill out the census without this question because of such fear at the time in 2010 of people finding out what their status is, that they're in a mixed-status home, that they have U.S. citizen children, that their mother may not be documented. And this, again, I could not echo it more, this kind of attempt is going to only further silence them but depress the amount of people who actually live here. We've seen when we lose those numbers in the census that our congressional representation went down. And that also speaks to how important it is that how many people are living in Massachusetts, all of them be actually counted. And also, one of the biggest concerns is that when we go to allocate resources for healthcare, when we go to allocate resources for schools, when we're talking about language accessibility, we actually need to know about the numbers of who folks are and where they're living. And without that information, that vital information, we're also shooting in the dark as well about our own population and needs. So, please add my name to this, and thank you so much for your leadership, Counselor Zakim.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Madam Clerk, if we could add Counselor Edwards' name, as well as Counselor Baker, Counselor Siomo, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Janey, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor Presley, Counselor Wu, as well as the Chair. At this time, Counselor Zakim seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of the second late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the second late-file matter has been adopted. Moving on to the green sheets, anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Moving right along, I am informed by the clerk that we have one late-file matter, which in the absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objection, the late-file matter will be added. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda at this time. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The consent agenda has been adopted. At this time, I'd like all guests and my colleagues to please rise as we adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Flaherty, Benito Toro. Edward Gretarix. The Honorable Paul Ryan. And James Murphy. For Counselor McCarthy, Margaret Murray. And for Counselor Wu, Carl Lazio. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The Chair moves that at this time, the Council adjourns today in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again Wednesday, April 4, at 12:00 noon in this chamber at Boston City Hall. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the Council is adjourned.